I know, and looking at these sheets, I know that there are a number of people here to speak on the North Shore project. We just had the committee, the whole meeting on it recently, and I think I want to move that up in our agenda to read it in right now. And Counselor Russ, if you could push your button. And for folks watching or in the audience right now, it is item 48 on page nine. Counselor Russ.
Resolution 272 is a resolution authorizing agreements with various parties and approving various agreements pertaining to the development of the North Shore Theater project.
Thank you, Counselor Russ. And we have a number of speakers. The first person is Robert Hoffman. And I think he was here during the committee meeting, but I did not see him now. He actually did tell me that he had to leave. So the second person on the list is Mr. David Ross, followed by Pam Kramer. Mr. Ross, if you could come to the lectern and raise it to accommodate your height, and you have three minutes.
President Filipovic, city councilors, my name is David Ross. I represent the Duluth area Chamber of Commerce. The majestic North Shore Theater has been empty, cold, and dark for too long. With your support tonight, the North Shore will soon be occupied, warm and bright. The Duluth area Chamber of Commerce remains an unwavering advocate for the restoring of the North Shore Theater. We believe that a restored North Shore is essential to our beloved downtown's continued growth and prosperity. We believe it will bring patrons, performers, energy, and artistic excellence to our Zena City Arts and Entertainment Center. George Sherman is the ideal person to lead this restoration. We place our full faith in this talented and conscientious leader. He has invested his time and treasure in Duluth for many years. Also, we are encouraged to know that Christine Seitz and her talented leadership team at the Playhouse will manage and operate the theater. I encourage you to vote for this development project, and thank you for the opportunity to have our voice heard.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Our next speaker is Pamela Crater Kramer, excuse me, followed by Kristi Stokes.
Thank you, President Filipovic, and thank you, city councilors, for this opportunity. Good evening. My name's Pam Kramer. I'm the executive director of the local initiative support corporation, LISC office in Duluth. And our mission is, as a part of a national organization, is to build healthy, sustainable communities and make sure that these are places where people and places prosper. We do this in partnership with the community, and we're proud to be a supporter and investor in this project. Duluth LISC has developed and made a strong investment in the project through the allocation of a $750,000 pre-development loan, and we have also made a commitment of New Markets Tax Credits totaling $7 million to the project. This commitment is based on the belief that it meets our mission and our goals in the community, but it's also based on our strong belief and support for the partners in the project and for the community effort that has been used to bring this project forward. We have a strong experience, positive experience, working with the developer in neighborhood revitalization and housing activities. And we've also very excited about working with the Playhouse and seeing this 100-year-old, very strong, community arts organization taking over the property and taking leadership in the arts. The North Shore Project was funded with New Markets Tax Credits through LISC through a very competitive process. There were 63 projects that were in the pipeline that totaled over $125 million in requests. LISC funded eight projects, and this was one of those projects. The allocation amount exceeded the average amount given around the country, and so I think we should be proud of the partnership and the work that has been brought together in Duluth and the ability to compete nationally. This project is part of the work that we've done with downtown revitalization, and it clearly meets a number of our goals as we look at revitalizing the community, addressing blight, real estate investment, historic preservation, building small businesses in the arts community, job creation, and improving the quality of life for children, for families, for those in our community through the arts. It was recommended, if people remember the charrette that was put on in 2005 by the Night Creative Community Building Program. They called for it to be returned, to help return commerce to the area, to sustain the investments that had been made already in the neighborhood, and to help create the stronger historic district downtown by building on the arts as a part of our regional economy. Again, we're very proud to be a partner in this effort. We feel that it's a solid, great investment in our community's future, so we ask your support and look forward to being able to celebrate together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Next up is Kristi Stokes, followed by Horace. I might have to take a second shot at that last name. Welcome, Kristi.
Thank you, President Filipovic, councilors, Mayor Larson. My name is Kristi Stokes. I'm president of the Greater Downtown Council, and we focus on promotion and supporting development in the downtown. I echo the comments that were made by David and Pam, and I also think back to last year because many of you were part of a real, I think, redefining moment when the old downtown officially took on the new brand of the Historic Arts and Theater District, or the Hart District. And that rebranding was really spurred by the vision of the North Shore, just looking at the renaissance of the North Shore Theater. Many investments have taken place in our downtown, in the Hart District, because of that, because the businesses are seeing such promise and the vision that is coming from the North Shore Theater. The partners, Sherman Associates, the Playhouse, DITA, LISC, should really be applauded for their persistence, their commitment, and their belief in downtown Duluth. I'd like to say, tonight is no longer a dress rehearsal. You are really setting the stage for this project to become reality, and so we are thrilled by that and truly support this and hope that you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes. I have next to my list Horace Kalbaugh. I might not be pronouncing that last name correctly, who signed up to speak on the North Shore. Last call for Horace. Is... Oh, yes, you, yes. Please come forward. I apologize.
Closing in on 83, I've lost 80 percent of my hearing. My hearing aids aren't that strong to pick up your voice.
I apologize. Welcome.
I was here as a very conservative person, and first of all, I mean, I said it, I'm not an eloquent speaker like you people with all the experience you have had. No, I came here with some very conservative thoughts on the North Shore Theater. I happen to be finance. I think we are headed to something that the pay gate is not going to pay for what you're attempting to get passed. I'm not going to say much more because I am advised before the meeting that this is a given thing that's going to pass. I just do hope that this North Shore Theater is not going to become a drain on finances like the Aquarium, the Ski Hill, and where we have to take our tourist tax dollars to support something like that that should be on its own pay gate. And I guess at this point, I can only say that seven or eight years is going to tell the tale. Be careful how you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Horace. Apologies for not being loud enough. The next person I have on my list to speak on this topic is Brian Hanson. Welcome, Mr. Hanson. If you could raise the microphone and...
I'll bring her up a little bit, even further than David, huh? All right. So, thank you, everyone. President Filipovic, councilors, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. As many of you know, I've been involved with this North Shore project for a long, long time and look forward to seeing this night, so thank you for giving us that opportunity. I am, in the past, worked for DITA, with DITA, and now I work in economic development with APEX, a partner with the city and throughout the region, bringing business into this region and helping existing companies grow. And Mr. Montgomery and his team, Mr. Osselson, have done an incredible job of positioning the city and DITA from my perspective. Great work. Thank you. And a great job that they did of thoroughly and concisely describing this project for all of you. I'm not going to talk about the project details. You've heard a lot about them, but I want to talk about four or five of the benefits. And some of these have been shared already, but the first one is just the obvious and significant improvement that has been made in the Hart District, even just with this purchase. We all know what was there before the purchase, and I think we could all venture to guess that a lot of the investment and the success that has happened there would not have happened had that theater continued to be used the way it was being used. So that's the first benefit that's significant before this great project. Next is the Skywalk Extension, or what I like to call the Arts Walk, because it's going through the Arts District, and I think that we're going to have some room in this project to really showcase arts in that Skywalk, the way we've done in other spots in the Skywalk. And this is a great place to do that, and that may have been something that Dr. Hoffman would have wanted to speak about. Also, really, this connection to go from the Medical District all the way to the Radisson, to this building, to the library, down to the deck, unbelievable access that we're providing our citizens, so thank you. Next, first-class entertainment venue. I understand that people would question, boy, is this thing going to be able to stand on its own? I think that the Playhouse are the right operators to make it stand on its own. I think that the ticket sales are going to be very impressive and that we're going to be, turn ourselves even further, further promote the great music that we've been able to develop in this community. And I do think that those ticket sales will be there. Next, projects like this are what makes Duluth cool. The investment that the community has made in things like trails, the investment that you all have made as a city in a place like Canal Park, the great parks that we have to offer, and now this theater, it fills a niche. It's of a size that we need in this community to attract first-class entertainment, so I'm looking forward to it. So, we have many benefits to enjoy. I'll be quick. I hope you, councilors, can embrace these benefits and go ahead and move forward on a positive vote tonight. I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I have, excuse me, Anthony, and I'm not sure if you're here to speak on the North Shore or another topic. Anthony Hernandez, are you here to speak on the North Shore project? Okay. Then I'm assuming we'll get to you a little bit later on in the agenda. That actually concludes our public speakers on this particular topic, and before we end, there's no council discussion, but Mayor Larson would like to say a few words.
Thank you, President Filipovic, and thank you, speakers, for being here in the public, for keeping great tabs on this important project. I do just want to say a few words. We talked for an hour earlier tonight about this project, Mr. Montgomery and our attorney and many people around the table here. I have to tell you, I started this new job in early January. Not a day has gone by that we haven't talked about North Shore. There may, I shouldn't say that. There may be like one or two Sundays where I haven't talked about North Shore. I have to tell you, the depth of commitment, of staff time, of vision, the smart planning that has gone into it has amazed me. The thoughtfulness, the way people have worked together, this is a very, very smart project. And together tonight, we get to be a part of something transformational. That does not happen very often, and in my four years on council, this building was already kind of in the mix. It was in the mix, and it wasn't at the point of being able to take a vote on it. I see it now from a new vantage as mayor, but with that same heart for transformation that is possible downtown. We've talked so long about the Hart District, about the businesses making investments. What we have in this building right now is not bringing value, and what we will have is something that we can be incredibly proud of, that will provide its own revenue stream, which will enable us to do so much more as a community. I have been waiting for this day, and I know you have too. The delay has been warranted because it is complicated, and it's complicated in a very, very good way. We have DITA, we have the Playhouse, we have LISC, we have Sherman, who has been an amazing partner to work with, who has stepped up when we asked to take on additional risk and liability for a project that has enormous public good. So I assure you that this delay was done in mind of the value that it's going to bring to the public and because we want to be incredibly careful stewards of public resources. I want to reaffirm for the public that these are dollars that we are investing from the city, from the DITA perspective, that cannot be used in other ways. These are economic development dollars. These are not dollars that I or you can use to pay for staff, or streets, or parks, or libraries. These are dollars intended to revitalize, to renovate, to redesign, to re-envision, and we're using them very judiciously and very appropriately. And there is some risk. There is always risk to an exciting, big project, to something new. But I do want to assure you that it's measured risk, it's calculated risk, and it's really appropriate. It's an appropriate amount, given the scope and potential for the economic impact of this finished product. So I'm really proud to be the mayor tonight and to be able to say that this is a package I can fully stand behind. This is a package that has been long in coming, and there's a lot of pieces that go into it. I really thank you for taking on the challenge of learning about it, of being a partner in this. I ask for your support on this project, and I want to, in particular, thank David Montgomery, who has, this has been pretty much a 24-hour-a-day job for you, David, and thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Larson. Now time for counselor comments. Counselor Russ.
Thank you, President Filipovic. I know there's concern out there in the community about the risk that the mayor has mentioned, but I believe that this project has been put together in such a way that it definitely minimizes any risk to the city of Duluth itself, perhaps some to DITA. But it's, you know, I actually read all of these agreements, and it just seems to me that this has all been put together very, very carefully, and in order to do that very carefully, I think it's been, it was wise for people to sort of step back, you know, take a breath, okay, then perhaps go in a little bit other direction. But I think you've, this project has the, just the right partners involved with it, sharing, you know, the burden for this. I certainly appreciate Mr. Sherman's interest in investing in this community, and I appreciate, you know, Pam Kramer and LISC for what they have been able to do with regard to this project as well, and makes a big difference, you know, when you've got people who also want to invest, you know, in Duluth that way. And I think that part of downtown just suffered so long in so many ways, and it's really very exciting to see it all come together. So I am definitely going to support this, and I hope that the majority of the council will as well tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Russ. Counselor Cypress.
Thank you, President Filipovic. I first want to thank, start by particularly thanking the gentleman who reminded us of the importance of not simply rubber-stamping these kinds of agreements. The reason that these types of agreements come to the elected city council is it is our job to provide the public accountability for these sorts of projects. When public money is involved, it's up to us to make sure that the public interest is protected, and I take that role very, very seriously. There are a lot of reasons why, you know, I would like to support this. I do believe that our architectural resources are among our most valuable resources in this community, and if we lost the North Shore Theater, then we've lost so many of our other architectural resources. It would be a tragedy that we would regret in future years. And I'm also a big supporter of the arts, so that's where my heart is. But that's not good enough in terms of voting for a project like this, a proposal like this. I have to set those things aside and have two other criteria before I vote yes on something. I can't vote yes on it just because I like the idea. For me, we should only vote yes on this if it serves the public interest and if the interests of taxpayers are protected, and I am convinced that this project is been put together in such a way that both of those criteria are met. It serves the public interest by continuing the investment in our downtown, investment that has been so important to the job growth that we've been experiencing in Duluth. You just have to look out the window to see the Maurices Tower. I'm sure that that investment and the permanent jobs that it's creating wouldn't have been happening if Maurices wasn't confident of the future of downtown Duluth. And you just have to look at the local small businesses that are popping up in the Historic Arts and Theater District. And what this project is going to do is it's going to take what is currently a blighted hole in the middle of our Historic Arts and Theater District and turn it into a huge asset for our downtown, and Duluth cannot prosper if our downtown doesn't prosper. And in terms of protecting the taxpayer, I want to thank Mr. Montgomery, I want to thank the DITA staff, I'd like to thank the city attorney's staff, everyone who's worked on this, because it has been put together in a way that protects the taxpayers against risk. I want to, first of all, stress that there is not one penny of general operating dollars going into this project. The money we use to fix the streets, to pay for cops, to fund our parks, is not in any way involved in this project. And if we voted against this project, we would not have one more penny than we have right now to do any of those things. The risks, I've had a lot of conversations with people who say that there's a real risk of cost overruns. It's a complicated project, it's an expensive project. People who know the building say it may cost more than the budget says. That's a real risk. The agreement's been written in such a way that the entire risk for cost overruns is on the developer, George Sherman's organization. So we are completely protected against cost overruns. If not for that, I probably wouldn't be voting for this. The Playhouse is taking a risk. They're taking on a huge project, and they're responsible for making the operating budget. And if they can't make the operating budget, and if they can't make their fundraising goals, that's going to put enormous strains on that organization. I have confidence in the Playhouse, that they're up to the task, but if they should fall short of their goals, that risk falls largely on the Playhouse, and again, also on the owner of the building for the first seven years, George Sherman's organization. We are putting some economic development dollars at risk with our loan to the Playhouse, but that's what those dollars are there for. Those dollars are there to promote economic development. And in the worst-case scenario, if we don't get that loan fully paid back, we have a mortgage on the building, and we end up with a renovated theater instead of a blighted theater. So I am confident that while there are risks, those risks don't fall on general taxpayers, and they do not fall on our ability to fund city services. If those things were put at risk, I would not be voting for this project. And then finally, I'd say, there's one big difference between this and Spirit Mountain, there's one big difference between this and the Aquarium. The city did something with the Aquarium that, in retrospect, might not have been the best idea. We guaranteed the bonds that were floated for the Aquarium, and we put city dollars at risk in a way that, in a way that we no longer do, and I want to thank the administration, both this one and the former administration, for being much more careful about obliging the city to things that we're not sure we can follow through on. And in the case of Spirit Mountain, it's a public authority. It's a public authority. Right now, this building belongs to the public. It belongs to the Duluth Economic Development Authority. It will belong to George Sherman's organization for a period of seven years, and then most likely, the Playhouse will exercise its option to take possession of the building that will belong to the Playhouse. And it's going to be, again, on them to make this work. And so I'm comfortable, I'm confident, that the interests of taxpayers are protected, and I do think that this project does serve the public interest and will really help us continue the reinvestment in our downtown, which is so important to the future prosperity of our city. So I will be voting for this, and I want to thank everyone who participated in putting this together, because I know it's been a long time and a lot of work.
Thank you, Counselor Cypress. Counselor Westerland.
Several of the points that I wanted to say in regards to this project have already been touched on by Counselor Cypress and Russ, but that's a good thing, because I think that it shows our shared interest in investing in this critical piece of our downtown infrastructure. There are a couple of things I want to say just about the fact that there, I've heard a lot from constituents that this is a very complicated project, why is it taking so long? I've shared those concerns. I am not a lawyer, so all of the legalese, all 260-some pages that I tried to review in preparation for this meeting, were, it was difficult. It's difficult to comprehend. I don't know if the public hearing earlier, the committee of the whole, is available to the public, but it helps to break down and make this plan and all of the different components much more digestible and understandable, and may help the public feel more confidence in the fact that this is a really good move for our city. It's a really unique partnership, public-private partnership. Our interests as your public servants are protected with your public dollars and are being wisely invested, and I don't know if, is that, it will be available? It is not available? It will be. Great. Look for that if you have concerns still. A few other things I just want to touch on. So the North Shore Theater is one piece of sort of this mosaic that we have going forward with this reimagining of our entire downtown business district, but also the Hart District in particular. And thinking about the next three to five years and all of the different investments that many different partners are going to be making in this downtown, it takes all of these diverse interests and all of these ongoing projects and all of these concurrent projects fitting together in the right way to instill the confidence that we need to bring long-term tenants to downtown, to bring tourists to downtown, where it's an aesthetically pleasing place, a place that gives a feeling of safety, a feeling of culture, a feeling of fun, all of those things that we want people to feel when they go to our downtown. And most of all, we want downtown Duluth and the North Shore to be a part of that experience for Duluthians. This is our downtown. This theater will be our community theater. We've seen the Duluth Playhouse grow and grow and grow. It is incredibly hard to get tickets sometimes, so with more seats, more of us will be able to experience all of the pleasure of those performances. We've seen other communities in northeastern Minnesota struggle with diversifying their economies, and investments in projects like the North Shore Theater are an investment in a diversification. It says that we're willing to try new things, we're willing to go in a different direction. We recognize a hunger for the arts in our community, from our residents and from visitors to our city, and we want to feed that hunger, and we support the jobs that are created as a result of that, and we support all of the different experiences that you can't really put a financial value on, that people access through the arts and humanities. So an investment in this theater is an investment in that vision of a diversified economy. And one last thing is just this investment from all of the different partners that we have working on this. It shows a confidence in this vision that we share for our revitalized downtown, and with the Superior Street project coming forward and all of the different amenities that will be coming as a result of that, having an anchor organization such as the North Shore Theater accounted for, filled with a very confidence instilling tenant, supported by diverse partners who are also saying, I'm willing to put my dollars behind this project and this vision, only helps to create more momentum to bring further tenants, visitors, and Duluthians downtown. So I just want to say, after the presentation today and all the time I spent reviewing this and talking with folks who are involved with this project, very supportive, very excited, and really thank everybody who has spent the many years, eight years, as I understand it, getting to where we are today, and it certainly seems that it was worth the wait. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Westerland. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, President Filipovic. I'm very excited about this vote tonight. It's, I'm glad it didn't take place in January when those of us who are new were sort of numb to the whole experience of being here, so I'm glad it's here tonight so that we can really appreciate it. I just wanted to make two comments. One is that I'm really counting on the administration to be diligent that if there is the potential for the 1% match... for the 1% match to, 1% commitment to the Duluth Public Arts that's connected through construction investment, that we'll make sure that we take care of that. And then also, during the comments from the public, there was mention that the Skywalk was going to go from the hospitals all the way to the Radisson, but it's not quite there with this project. We have, just want to make sure the public understands that, at least unless I've got it wrong, but we still have the casino block to work through, and I'm looking forward to seeing that next step come, because that will be such a tremendous benefit to our community. So I'm really excited to be here and looking forward to this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. I actually do not see any other -- there we go. Councillor Fosley?
Thank you, President Filipovic. Councillors, the speakers were all right. There's going to be a lot of people going to these events. My concerns would be parking. Another concern I've had right from the beginning of this whole North Shore Theater revamp is seating. I brought it up before many times. I met with a professional that has revitalized these theaters throughout Wisconsin, North Dakota, South Dakota, the five-state area that these venues go from one to the other, and this now is going to be part of it. But when I met with him, he said, "Councillor Fosley, can you make sure that they make that 1,000-seat, or somehow get that bug in their ear?" I tried, and to no avail, because we're looking at a 625-seat, so it's too small. And then to the public-dollar statement, they're all public dollars. These are all public dollars. Doesn't matter, you know, they're all public dollars. The loan agreements, I'm not too thrilled about DETA being a bank at $3.5 million, but, you know. The Skywalk, I'm glad that councillor Anderson brought up, the casino block, because when I was first elected in 2008, council was DETA. All nine councillors were DETA. And we had a DETA director, Tom Catruevo, that we were trying to get to the casino so we wouldn't lose out on that revenue, that $6 million, which was probably a little lower at that time, or it could have been higher, I don't know. But see what happened there? We didn't get there, and we lost that revenue. And we were talking about that forever, trying to get through that block, and that's where we should have focused all along. Yeah, it's not a strip club anymore, but we spent $2.3 million on a building that was assessed for $150,000. So, you know, we could, you could make that into all kinds of things if you wanted to, but they went this route, and that's fine. But being that, my thoughts are that it's too small, and the fact that when it was first presented to the council back then, it was going to be $8 million to revamp the North Shore. At that time, a councillor that was on DETA said, "Oh, no, it's going to be 20 million for sure." Well, now we're up to 30 million. It's just, it's, and I do have the same concerns as the gentleman that spoke about putting tax, tourism tax dollars in there, creating another tourism fund. I mean, we're going to have, we got enough things on that tourism tax already. It was created for a few, and now we've got, I think, 20 or maybe more on there. So I might be just a lone voter of no, but I am voting no to this project.
Thank you, councillor Fosley. We have, before we get back to councillor Cypress for a second round, I want to make sure that other councillors have the opportunity to speak for a first time. And seeing none, I'm going to speak for a first time. First, I want to thank all of the partners who are involved with this project, the city, DETA, the Playhouse, and Sherman Associates. There's a lot of things that I am excited about, one being the Skywalk system that connects this project, the further eastern part of downtown directly to the medical arts parking ramp. Hopefully, we'll be able to utilize that parking ramp more, more abundantly as time moves forward, and as this project gets complete with that Skywalk connection. I am thrilled about the Playhouse and the concept of this community theater, being a community theater for the long haul. I am appreciative, and I said this at the DETA meeting a little while back, that I am appreciative of their conservative budget and fundraising budget. I'm glad to hear that they have contingencies on their operating, both revenue side and 10% contingency on their expense side. I am excited about the guarantee agreement that Mr. Sherman has agreed to, that any cost overruns of this project will be bore by him, and that shows the commitment that Mr. Sherman and his team are showing, not only to this project, but I think Duluth as a whole. I'm excited about the 7-to-1 leverage that we get with our DETA dollars. For every dollar that DETA has put into this, we get $7 in return. That is very exciting. We have a project labor agreement from Sherman and his team, and I am so thankful that this was a community effort with all these different partners. I want to also, and I will be in support of this if you cannot tell by my comments, but I also want to extend my thanks to former councillor Larson, and now Mayor Larson, former Mayor Don Ness, and for helping to create the Hart District, former councillor Charlotte Gardner. I want to thank those people, and I will be voting in support. Now, with that, we will get moving to folks who are going to speak for possibly a second time, or if other councillors want to jump in as well. Councillor Cypress?
Thank you, President Filipovic. Just one very brief comment. Some residents have raised the question of whether or not the tower is part of this restoration, and just so there's no misunderstanding, the tower is not part of this restoration. There's some talk of maybe that being a future endeavor. Just don't want anyone to be disappointed that when this is done, the tower isn't there. So I just thought I'd share that with the public.
Thank you, councillor Cypress. And Mr. Montgomery would like to make a comment.
Thank you, President Filipovic. And councillor Cypress, you are right, we would all love to see the tower at some point in the future, but that's for a future effort once this gets built. I just wanted to briefly thank, on behalf of the city, on behalf of DETA, first of all, all the staff that have worked so hard on this project over the years, including three different directors of Business and Economic Development. Brian Hansen, who spoke here earlier, was involved on the front end. Chris Ang was involved, and Heather Rand has been stepping in and helping terrifically as we're coming close to the finish line. Bob Osselson, just because he's Bob. We would have never been here without his expertise, his history, his knowledge of TIF, and the knowledge of these kinds of agreements, just amazingly helpful to get this done. The partners, we've heard many of the partners. There's a couple that haven't yet been mentioned. Keep in mind that this whole project became a reality only because we were able to secure a $6.9 million state funding grant from DEED. That happened only through the support of our legislative delegation, this and prior councils, as well as partnerships with George Sherman and Associates in making that case and that pitch down at the legislature and making that happen. That was the critical launch point for this whole project. DEED, obviously, LISC, Pam Kramer, again, as I said earlier, LISC stepped in early to provide some critical pre-development funding, and was a key player in securing the much-needed tax credits, along with BMO and Chase. The Playhouse, obviously, because without the Playhouse, this doesn't happen. Christine Seitz has learned more than she ever wants to know about historic tax credits, new market tax credits, VE items, development programs, but she stepped in and just did an amazing job, along with her board, who provided much, much-needed and brilliant support in bringing this all about. George Sherman and Sherman Associates, even not so much for George, but for his team. He had an amazing team working with it, from their attorneys, to their theater people, to their architect, support people, an amazing amount of work that they have committed to this, and very, very helpful. And then, you know, for Mayor Ness, for the vision to bring this on originally, and Mayor Larson to really embrace it, both on the council and as current mayor, to bring it home and bring it across the finish line. Without all those people, this project never gets done, and this project never comes before you. And then just the broader community, who have been there, supporting these efforts, very open with their questions, comments, and concerns, which, as we heard, helped us in going back and having those ongoing discussions with the group, how we address them. So for all those folks, I want to thank every single one of them. I do hope you vote to support this project going forward, and we can start getting to work right away in May. I think it'll be an exciting time for Duluth and downtown Duluth in particular. So thank you all very much for your support in this endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Councillors, for a second round, councillor Westerland?
And just really briefly to add one point I forgot to add, which was that in earlier iteration of this project, when we were sort of trying to figure out if it was going to go forward or not, there was some contention about ADA compliance and ensuring that the North Shore Theater would be an ADA-compliant facility, and I'm really pleased to say that it is. And when I said that all Duluthians will be able to access this theater and all of the diverse programming we expect that will be performed there, that is all Duluthians of all abilities and ages, and so I think that is a really critical piece that we can also be very proud of and excited about.
Thank you, councillor Westerland. Councillor Russ?
Thank you, President Filipovic. Just one more comment about restoring old buildings. When I first moved to Duluth, it was end of 1979, and it was just really obvious to me that on this western side of downtown, there was some obvious clearing of the buildings that once were here. And of course, I ended up marrying someone who grew up here, and so he could tell me exactly where this hotel was and that was, and not just Duluth, but in the '60s, we'd, you know, eliminated so much of the old architecture in our cities. I know it happened in St. Paul, it happened in Minneapolis. And so I think what's been really important to me all these years with the North Shore sitting there was, I hope it doesn't end up just being, you know, bulldozed. I know it had some very hard times under prior ownership, and we were all concerned about that, and DETA buying that property, it seems like a lot of money it does. I'm pretty sure the previous owner must have driven a pretty hard bargain. But I think that we're really lucky that DETA did buy that movie, it's not a movie house, the theater. And I think it really, we should really be very proud of that, because there wasn't much left to save that was worth saving. There was some private folks in town who did do some very nice work down in that area, too, with restaurants and so on, and so this is really going to add to that, and I think we just, we need to just look at it from that point of view, too, that we've sort of saved a building that really needed to be saved.
Thank you, councillor Russ. I don't, I do not see any other councillor comments in the queue. I do just want to say, for my second time to speak, there are multiple levels of scrutiny that this process, this project, has gone through. Not only city staff, not only all the various teams that are involved who do care about our community, but also the DETA vote that was taken. And we had a very similar presentation at that time last week, as we did just a few hours ago for the full council. And we have us as the final, as the final say on this project. So with that, I don't see any other folks in the queue to speak, but we will take Resolution 272, the North Shore Project, to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Resolution 272 passes 8 to 1. Councillor Fosley opposed.